To the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled September 3rd, 2024 city council meeting. As you come in, the double doors, which would be to my right, to everyone else's left tonight, you walk through those doors, there'll be a desk, on that desk, there's a sign and sheet. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilperson Morrissey. Palladino.
Here.
Pratt.
Here.
Sherp.
Here.
Soha.
Here.
Stuccio.
Here.
Veer.
Here.
Wolfram.
Mayor Stockford.
Here.
We have seven present mayors.
Thank you, Katie. We have had correspondences from Councilman Morrissey and Councilwoman Pratt, they will not be present tonight. We'll move into approval of agenda. City Manager or any members of council have any changes they'd like to see made to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Sharp to approve the agenda, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it, we've got an agenda. We'll move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit yourself to one trip to the podium and please limit your time to three minutes. And please remember, during this particular public comment period, you can only speak on something that has a direct tie to something that's pressing on the agenda. Also, we've got a public hearing regarding the vacation of East Galloway Drive and a portion of Summit Street. There will be a public comment period during that time, so if that's what you'd like to speak on, please wait until that time to speak on that particular issue. Also, guys, we're gonna have, we're gonna be very strict about the three-minute time limit, moving forward from this point. So, if I let one person go over three minutes, then I have to let another person go over three minutes, and then we've got seven minutes, and then we've got eight minutes, we're just gonna follow the rules and we're gonna strictly go with the three minutes. If your time is up and I cut you off, I'm sorry, I promise not being rude, it's just decorum. So, the podium is now open.
So, when I left last time, I went home and I had to watch the rest of it, so I want to make an apology for leaving early. I didn't realize on the time, when you guys go into your private thing, it took up a lot of my time, I looked at the clock and it was like, I gotta get out of here. So I want to apologize for that, and then at the end, where you said I had made some errors, I went back and looked at my notes, my notes were correct, so I decided to listen, and yes, I did make errors, not, it should have been a hundred thousand dollars and not ten thousand, so I just came up to apologize, and from now on, I'm not gonna double schedule anything on these nights, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Anyone else? Public comment, podium still open?
Hi, my name is Megan Angel, I live at 298 North Hillsdale Street, and I'm kinda late to the party, finding out about the closing of Summit Street and Galloway Street, but this led me to look through the development agreement that you folks approved at the last city council meeting with the college, and I tried to read the whole development agreement, but there are no exhibits to what is online, so the proposed site plan is not visible to me there or anywhere else on the city website. I would really like to see the site plan, if there is one. Also, there were other exhibits referenced in the development agreement, they are not attached to what is online, thank you.
Thank you, madam. Any more public comment? One, two, three, there it is. Go ahead, Jack.
Okay, I would like to speak about the public safety meeting, I think that was a good idea about the jaywalking that was brought up, those churchgoers, the park behind the courthouse, of course, there's no sidewalk there for them to walk on without going down to the steps and going up to get on the sidewalk, so they all jaywalk over to the church, which is really a pain, at the time, they're going to church and they're leaving church, so I think Robert's idea was a great idea, they need to start making them go to the corners and start walking like everybody else has to. Then the thing I wanted to speak about was the dial-a-right advertising, I think that's a great moneymaker for the city, but, with that being said, I also think the city limit signs is a great moneymaker for the city. If you're gonna charge one to advertise, you need to charge them all. We got three colleges in this town of eight thousand people, but yet we segregate one, I don't know if we're, what we're doing, if we're partial to one or what, but we do have three colleges in this town, and we need to respect them all the same. Ted can speak on how much it costs to have an advertising sign like a billboard sign, the college should not give anything less than what anybody else would have to pay, and if you're gonna let them advertise on there, then post it for bid and let people do just like you're asking them to do on the dial-a-right, there's no reason you can't do that. The other thing, and I'm just gonna speak on this, I know it's coming up in the public hearing, but the paperwork I read, the college does not own all the property yet that would be affected by this vacating these properties, so with that being said, my opinion would be, once they get the properties purchased, then give them the right to do it, or give them the right to vacate the property, but don't do it until they actually have all the property, because they're, you're affecting private citizens now when you start vacating that property, not just making an allowance for the city. I know I went to a meeting once, it was a zoning board of appeals, the college told Mr. Smith that they were gonna be on the board of directors for the West Street Project LLC, the only trouble was, I owned the LLC, and I said, no, he's not, which should have made it go back to start one, because there was a false statement there, because the papers were filed under my LLC name, they should have had to refile, which they didn't for some reason, I mean, I think we all realize why they didn't, but they didn't have to refile, which was definitely not right, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any more public comment? Any more public comment regarding agenda items? Podium's still open. Seeing none, we'll close the podium and move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and BPU claims of August 15th, payroll of August 15th, city council minutes of August 19th, finance minutes of August 19th, public safety minutes of August 26th, and then our annual bo-hunt is on there as well. Any discussion regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? Councilman Palladino?
Someone requested that we waive the background check for the deer hunt to incentivize people engaging in it, because not many people do it due to the deer population, so I don't know what it costs, fifty bucks or something, but maybe that's something we could do.
Thank you, Councilman Palladino. Is that right, not many people engage in it? I thought we had more people that apply for it than what we can usually give out permission to do it, and we're using a lottery system.
Well, we only have a certain amount of property that can be hunted, and it's primarily private at this point, so it doesn't allow for very many hunters, but we've had success in with taking some deer out of the population, and we've always done the background check as part of that process. Scott could give you the reasons why, but he is not here tonight, but I know he would recommend for it.
Thank you, Dave. Any more discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Veer. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, both, please?
Yes, Councilperson Palladino.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Soha.
Here.
Stuccio.
Here.
Veer.
Yes.
Wolfram.
Mayor Stockford.
Yes.
Seven zero approved.
Thank you, Katie. We will move into communications petitions. First item, letter A, Willow Street stop sign update. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. At the Public Safety Committee meeting on August 26th, Sergeant Pratt and myself spoke with the Public Safety Committee on our findings, we had some issues up there with limited site visibility from a site triangle issue, pavement widths, as you started off from twenty-three foot nine, transversing down to seventeen feet, also limited site triangle with, for uncontrolled intersection, and then the grade up the hill going westbound, limited eyesight or visibility for traffic, that could cause obscure traffic, motorists. Based on our findings, Sergeant Pratt, the police chief, and myself recommends to leave the stop sign on both the eastbound and westbound traffic at Lake Street.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Okay. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted Council to be aware in the public that the Millers came to us and asked us to check into it because they had a U-shaped driveway with two entrances, unfortunately, one of the entrances is within this setback from the stop signs that the state of Michigan requires, based on the site angles and everything, and when we looked at it, we wanted to see if we could make an exception and remove the stop signs, but then we learned, if we did so, the city could be liable, should any accident happen there, if we had removed the stop signs against the states. Suggestions are their rules, and so we decided that it was not within the city's best interest to do that. To make amends for that, if you wanna call it amends, the city went above and beyond for the house on the corner there, widening their driveway to fifty-four feet, and making special exceptions there, we don't, I don't think there's another fifty-four-foot driveway in the city.
Not residential.
Not in a residence, so I think we've gone above and beyond to make amends to the family on the corner, even though it is a bit of a discomfort for them, and they're gonna have to make adjustments on how they park. But as we've witnessed with our road projects and everything, and we're digging into some of the ordinances and the depth of them and what's required for the city, I think it's important for us to maintain integrity there and not make simple exceptions on a whim, and I appreciate what Jason's done, and he's actually offered to go back and do some more infilling and some more work to help alleviate the situation, so I just wanted Council and the public to be aware.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, guys, for exploring that option, I appreciate it.
Robert's here.
Any more, any more questions for Jason, conversation, council members? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we will move on in communications petitions, to item letter B, Hillsdale County Commissioner update from Commissioner Ingles, and I don't see Commissioner Ingles out there tonight, so Doug? So I guess we've got no Commissioner update. All right, we will move into introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing regarding the vacation of East Galloway Drive and a portion of Summit Street. We'll now open the public hearing, and we'll start with comments from City Manager Mackey.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As was presented at the last council meeting, we set the public hearing for tonight on the resolution to vacate Galloway Street, a portion of Galloway Street and a portion of Summit Street. As denoted in the description, Council also approved the development agreement that was negotiated between the city and the college, so that has passed. This is the second step of that process for the city, there is a third process, which is an ordinance, that would come after the resolution potentially is passed, and then there's work on the college's behalf, or part, to accomplish this, so with that, I'll take questions from the Council during that process, and I believe Matt from the college is here, in case there's some questions from the college's standpoint, but otherwise, we can open the public hearing.
Okay, Matt, will you come to the podium, please? Just in case anybody has any questions. Okay, any questions for Matt? Councilman Soha?
It was mentioned in public comment that you don't own all the property associated with the development of the, I was under the understanding that you do.
As am I.
Okay, any other questions? All right, Councilman Sharp?
Site plan, you guys give us a site plan, didn't you, a little bit?
There is an architectural sketch, that kind of has a high-level overview of that, I'll be honest, I don't know the legal definition of a site plan, I don't know what it requires to entail.
Well, basically, it's like, what it'll affect the Galloway, how much you're gonna lose of that, that road's gonna be completely closed off, right?
What do you mean by completely closed off? It'll go all the way across the road, yes?
Yes, but I just wanna be sure, and you're, how far down are you guys going, you bought two houses on Northwest Street, correct? Biltner being one of them?
Correct, yes.
That's where it ends?
Yes.
Okay, that clears a lot for me, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any more questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt, stay handy, though, please.
I'll be around, thank you.
Okay, okay, Council, any questions for Dave, discussion? Okay, now, we will open the podium for public comment. During this time, during this public comment period, please limit yourselves to three minutes, please limit your trips to one to the podium, and during this particular public comment period, you have to, it has to have a direct tie to the vacation of East Galloway Drive and portion of Summit Street, so the podium is now open.
How's everyone tonight? Kevin Parkin, 72 West, and on hearing that, I would just have to ask one question, if we're at this phase, how can we not have a site plan? We're having a meeting like this, we should all be able to come in and review an actual plan that shows what the city's giving or selling, and what the college is gonna do with it. I would think that would have been a very simple thing for the college to present at this point, instead of just, we're buying up properties and we're gonna do this, and there's nothing, apparently, that shows the public here what's going on, and if I could just ask, is there a purchase price, actual price, that the college is gonna pay for this? Has that been settled?
The purchase price to whom?
To the city, from the college, for the closure of these streets.
There, there is no purchase. The property is not owned by the city, it's simply property that was dedicated to the public for public streets.
Okay, on the public, those streets have been city, public taxpayer usage for a long time, one hundred and fifty-some years. Hillstone College has nine hundred million in endowments, one point one million for administrator, they purchased a winery in California, you go into other communities, when I was chief, I know Albion bought their city an aerial truck, and the college should pay, the taxpayers then of this community, there should be some financial gain out of this, because when these properties are gone, they don't come back, and it's been that way for many, many years, and that's a complaint of most of the citizens in this town that I hear repeatedly, is a massive conflict of interest, and that the college, everything's a free ride, and I don't wanna hear this, they pay so much in taxes, the last I saw, they pay the equivalent to the Kroger Plaza, that's not much for that area. Also, yeah, they are the largest employer, a lot of those people don't make that great of wages, let's face it, twelve bucks an hour in housekeeping and in other areas, and they don't all live in the city, and I just, I'm one of the people in this city, a taxpayer, that have just felt for too long, they've got a free ride, and that seems to be the situation again, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. I mean, would we call the three hundred thousand dollar payments and the one point seven million dollar endowment in exchange for the vacation? Would that be, would you call that a dollar amount?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
Thank you.
So two million dollars, that's the payment? Thank you, Kevin. Any more public comment?
According to the papers that were in the packet, and I'm not sure why they weren't updated, but it states in there that the college does not own all that property, now, they can say what they want, but until they lay the deed on the table, this paper says they do not, so, and I'm not sure why the public wouldn't have got the up-to-date information, which is what Mr. Parkin was talking about, you need, that information needs to be out there, and I cannot believe they do not have a site plan, I mean, that's totally ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any more public comment?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Megan Angel, we got 298 North Hillsdale Street. When I initially read the development agreement, I was kind of hopeful that, as it says in paragraph four, Galloway Street would only be closed between Northwest Street and Summit Street, but of course, it's apparent from tonight's materials that it will be closed from Northwest Street to Hillsdale Street, and that's where I live, I'm very familiar with that intersection, it's a fairly dangerous intersection when students are around, people come out of the parking lot, there's a lot of cross-traffic every which way, I certainly hope that going forward, the city council will consider the fact that students don't stop when they leave the parking lot, at the bottom of, as it feeds into Hillsdale Street, without knowing what the college is gonna do, it's kind of hard to speak to this part of the plan, are they gonna close the street, is that street gonna be open for student traffic to those parking lots? I don't have any clue, I don't know if you know either. Have you considered that by eliminating Galloway Street, you will channel all of that traffic down to Fayette Street, or to Division Street, if you wanna lose your car, or to the next street, North Montgomery? I hope that you, if going forward, you'll consider upgrading, upgrading, replacing that has taken place, it's terrible up there, and I know that's a pretty recent street. those streets, they are, especially Division Street, is in a not resurfaceable condition. I don't know if you did a traffic study, I know there are no sidewalks on Montgomery or Division, there is a sidewalk, I don't know who built it, perhaps the college, perhaps the city, but on Galloway Street, there is a sidewalk, so you're eliminating the sidewalk that I use every day, traffic study, I don't know, we're concerned about giving one point two million dollars to the foundation, I know that city, city money is overseen, it's published, everybody can see what city money is spent on, I don't know why, what the thinking was of putting the one, one point two at the Hillsdale Community Foundation. Last but not least, I'm not a forester, I don't pretend to play one, but the big oak at the top of the hill has a circumference, as measured by me, just a girl with a tape measure, of two hundred and ten inches, it looks to me like a white oak, if it has a two hundred and ten inch circumference, it is estimated to be three hundred and thirty-four years old. What happens to that tree in this site plan? This community always broadcasts tradition, values, valuing things from the past, things that are beautiful. What about the tree? I am here to speak for the tree, and I hope that your forester will address this, thank you.
Thank you. Can you, Jane, can you, Matt, can you answer any of those questions that she had?
Sure, can you start at the top, just go through them? I'm sorry, I don't recall all of them off the top of my head.
She asked if the street was going to be closed?
Yeah, so like I said during the question from Council, my understanding of it is from Summit to West Street will be where the hotel will span the street, from Galloway to the summit will remain a access street, a Um, from Galloway to the summit will remain a access street, assuming with access to those parking lots. Um, but obviously a summit will be closed with the roundabout. There will not be any through traffic through there, so. I will speak onto the tree. Um, I know, I can't, again, we have not, and maybe this perhaps interests the site plan question as well. Um, given the status of even these conversations, there is not a complete architectural rendering construction plans for what this building looks like. Um, we have an architectural rendering, um, that shows, again, the general area and kind of within the boundaries of the property that we own. Um, some of those, I know we're very much aware of that tree and recognize the history of that tree. I do not know, I cannot answer as to, again, there is not a final plan that would say if it stays or leaves. But we are very much aware of that.
Okay, those are the only questions I remember. Was there another? Oh, yeah, it is, it's one point seven in the community foundation, not one point two.
I, I can actually speak to that as well.
Yeah.
So, the reason we, uh, approached the community foundation about holding the endowment rather than the city is that there are, as I understand it, state requirements on what the city can do as far as investing goes, that kind of hamstring the, uh, interest rates that they can acquire. Um, so the idea of putting it in the community foundation would be to allow them to get a better, uh, interest rate for their investment, so, thank you.
Thank you.
From my experience in dealing with community foundations, typically there is some kind of document, some kind of plan that the expenditures must fall within. It seems to me that we're kind of ahead of our.
Sharon Bicher's here tonight with the community foundation. Maybe you can go ask Sharon. Maybe she can give you some more information regarding that. Podium still open? Go ahead, madam.
Brenda Moda, three sixteen Summit Street. I just have a lot of questions. Like, when you vacate the street, so what part of Summit is, are they gonna close it? Treat it like an alley? Is it still gonna be maintained in the winter? Um, I've been at Summit for a while, and we've talked about this, Mayor and I, when the college built their church cathedral, whatever you want to call it, they had construction trucks that shouldn't have been on Summit hauling all kinds of materials back and forth, tore the street up really bad. And it hasn't been fixed since then. We had talked that maybe the college would help fix that first couple of blocks. So I just have questions. People that live in that area, why isn't there an information packet? What their plans are, timeline, who's going to maintain things, who's going to do what? Um, I was taken by surprise a couple of weeks ago when I started seeing this on the internet and everywhere else. And I live four houses down from the church, so as one of you said, the college kids' traffic is enormous. And I don't have a problem with the college, but Summit is basically a one-way street when college is in because we're the only street that has that parking all the way down. Parking lots are overfilled. Everybody parks there. It's, it's a traffic hazard. Um, so I just have a lot of questions. Like, if you guys are gonna vote on this and approve it, and you're gonna have a public infomac, I would think there'd be an info packet, like what we're all looking at. A timeline, that type of thing. So, that's my.
Yes, madam. I understand that. Um, sorry, this thing's new tonight, so this is our first time with this. Yeah, I, I mean, I can't speak particularly to the information, uh, as to in what sort of order that you want to do something like this. Uh, and I haven't been privy to inside conversations with the college regarding how much information that they have actually done at this point and how much groundwork they've done. It does, uh, it does occur to me that perhaps this could be the first step. Okay, it does occur to me that perhaps you would want to see if the city would vacate the streets before moving forward with a bunch of architectural renderings and, I mean, would that be the case, do you think?
Actually, they've already got an architectural rendering. They've got a pretty good idea of what their timeline is. Why they said more than just that. So, if you're going to give them the trades, you want them waiting for trades. Just let us know, like, who's gonna vacate the streets, where is that?
Yeah, we, I don't, we don't have that information, so.
So the street will still be the part of it that is not vacated? So they're only looking to vacate that south three hundred feet that connects with Galloway Drive?
So it says two hundred and sixty-two feet.
It's three hundred and two feet, is it not? On Summit Street?
Summit is two hundred and three feet.
Oh, two hundred and three, okay, I got it backwards. It's two hundred and three, so it's only that two hundred and three feet at the tip of Summit where it meets Galloway Drive. There will be a cul-de-sac that it will be installed at the end of the rest of Summit Street that exists there. So folks who use Summit can come down, turn through the cul-de-sac and go back out since there will not be that wayback exit onto Galloway. The city will, it will continue to be a public street. It will continue to be maintained by the city. Um, it'll still be part of the city's street system. The only part of it that wouldn't be is the part that gets vacated, which is that couple hundred feet right at the end. And there, there is actually a, in terms of the site plan, there is a drawing or a set of drawings, um, sketches, as, as Matt referred to, that have been used as the placeholder for the site plan at this point, that just generally show where things would go. And included among that, the, the PPU has prepared a drawing that shows where the, uh, the cul-de-sac would be on Summit Street. So that is available if anyone wanted to take a look at it. Dave was in the packets before.
Should be the next meeting, council packet.
It was in the previous council packet.
So August nineteenth, city council packet, if you go to the city webpage. And it was an artist rendering, and it, and it really, uh, because Summit is in horrendous shape. And really regarding the conversations that you and I have had with it, when this came up, I honestly thought that this could probably lead to some attention to Summit Street because why would you want to be leading to a, uh, driving up to a, uh, five-star hotel with, on a street that's third, it, it really is, Summit's in really bad condition, so. Any more public comment regarding the vacation of Galloway?
So I'm actually a county employee, so I was able to pull up the GIS map. Um, college does own all that property across there, from Hillsdale to West Street on both sides. It's on the GIS that they own that, so that is confirmed that they do own it. My concern is that the people on Summit Sweet Street, I mean, I don't live that, in that area, but I'm just talking to the people over here. Um, that would be, end up being a dead end. Now, are you gonna do like the assessment for them to fix that road? Because if you're gonna charge them each five thousand dollars to fix a road that was tore up by the college building, doing all the other stuff, that wouldn't be right. You know, because you said about fixing it up now, that's a five thousand dollar assessment for each one of those to fix up a road that they said that, when they built the cathedral, that, that road got tore up. Also, it will increase, from looking at the GIS map, the people on West Street are gonna get all that traffic that people used to go through on Summit. I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but that road is, will be your next main road. It will turn into a main road. But college does own both properties on both sides. Summit will end up being a dead end, and hopefully they don't get charged assessments. And West Street will be your main, main road again.
Thank you, Shannon. Handy to have a county employee here. Dave, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just a, a comment on the cul-de-sac. Actually, that's a responsibility to install and pay for by the college. So that will be paid for by the college. They will also pay for all the utility relocation as part of this project, which will be electric, water and sewer. And in regards to, uh, I don't know, tentative timeline that's been discussed, if everything goes as hoped, um, they would like to see the project under construction um, in two thousand twenty-six because next year would be basically the year of moving the utilities. Um, so they wouldn't be able to start construction probably to spring of twenty-six if, if everything went as planned. Um, as was mentioned about the site plan, it, um, it is, uh, as, um, city attorney mentioned, we do have that, uh, uh, draft or drawing that's in there as a placeholder. Typically, one does not do a site plan until they know that they can actually do what they're asking to do. Um, because if they're turned down, they would have wasted a substantial amount of money to do that. Um, so that would be something that would be done once they get through this vacation process, um, which then also has to go to the, to the local court as well. Um, so we're one part of it. Tom could explain that if you had a deeper question on that. Um, so we passed the development agreement resolution and a subsequent ordinance. And then they have to take that information along with the replating to the, uh, is it district or county court, Tom?
It's to the circuit court. So under the, the sub, um, the Land Division Act, there's a provision or procedure for applying to the court to amend a plat. Basically, they would go through and amend a plat. If it was approved by the, uh, by the court, then they will actually prepare a new plat of the two subdivisions affected showing that those streets are no longer part of the dedicated public streets. And also, they would include as part of the dedication a new cul-de-sac that they would be putting in.
And lastly, as was, um, kind of mentioned that, um, my, the college representative, Matt, and the question was brought up about the community foundation. I think Tony might be able to add some to this as, uh, we, Tony, Councilman Veer and myself were the ones that, um, worked on the negotiations with the college. The idea with the community foundation was to set up a perpetual revenue stream that could be added to in the future. So others could actually contribute monies, uh, whether it be another business or even the college at a future time, um, could put revenues into the community foundation, which could either be left there to grow or, um, the interest could be taken off, uh, annually. Um, and the idea behind that was, is that it would be, um, set up to provide support for essential city services, which were deemed police, fire, roads, um, those three things at this particular point. But it would also leave it to, up to council to make future decisions about those resources. So that is what, what we know at this point.
Thank you, Dave. Tony, you have anything to add?
Yeah, with the endowment, it was kind of my intention that it would give, uh, the city another revenue stream that they wouldn't have to go after said taxpayers. You know, currently going forward, we've fixed a lot of the streets with, uh, SADs, which has presented some hardships for the property owners affected. And it's just because we've gotten this, ourselves, in this terrible state because of the priorities of past councils have not prioritized the streets. But with this, uh, endowment, it would enable the, the city again to have a funding source. And my, my thought on it would be that it would keep growing, getting larger and becoming a bigger portion of the city budget. And I know they worked, uh, with Myers coming into, into town as far as all the relocations of the power lines and things like that. That being said, the college is gonna pay for all the power line relocations. And it's, and they have to do it to the specs that are state-approved and, uh, BPU-approved. So, uh, you can think of it in terms that those residents may be in the close proximity of the college or might end up in the end of having a more dependable, not that it hasn't been in the past, power sources and utility functions. Um, and with the fact that this college is gonna pay the city, uh, basically two million dollars to vacate these streets. And as Tom mentioned earlier, the city just vacates it, but it's up to the courts to actually finalize the deals, deal so to speak, with the, uh, plat, uh, redoing of the plat. But, um, just in this day, uh, and age, as far as with the, the current climate, uh, I think this is really a good thing for the city. And granted, I'm, I can appreciate the concern that many have come with the fact that they can't look at a site plan. But I would think, uh, a project of this scope to produce that site plan, not knowing if it, you'd see if it's gonna come to few, uh, to, uh, the real thing is, it would probably be in the neighborhood, I would think, of, of multi-million dollars just to do that. But there, they did, as David said, had a, and a kind of rendering of what the hotel would look like, along with the fact to keep in mind that the, all the building codes will be followed and that they'd actually be erecting the hotel, restaurant and so forth on their, on their property. So I, I still think that, um, this is a real good deal for the, for the city. Because you can think of it also from the standpoint of, uh, the city has issues with maintaining its current roads. So you're getting alleviated, maybe, I'm thinking maybe a tenth of a mile of Galloway and a little portion of Summit. And, uh, I think in the end, uh, it's gonna be a good thing for the residents of Hillsdale.
Thank you, Tony. Dave, did you have something to add to that?
Just a couple of more points that came to mind. Uh, as the tree was brought up, uh, the city staff is, is, uh, definitely aware of that, and we've had discussions about that particular tree that's right next to the road. Actually have seen renderings where the tree is included as kind of a focal point. And that's kind of what we're hoping will, uh, occur with that particular tree. It will be kind of a roundabout leading into the col, the hotel entryway with this massive white oak. So that's the hopes. Hopefully it will be in a, in a place that it can be worked around. Um, but it has been discussed and the, the city has looked at all those trees. Um, also on the site plan, it will have to go, the plans for the, the building, the parking, the whole, the whole project will have to go through planning and zoning review. Um, so it's not, if this is approved here today, that, um, they can do whatever they want. No, it will actually have to go to those committees with the city, be reviewed, and ultimately probably have to come back to council for, for the, those final approvals. So, um, just wanted to mention that, that, uh, there are multiple reviews still left, um, to be done.
Thank you, Dave. Hope that got a little more information out there. The podium's still open if anybody would like to use it.
My name's Brenda Cox. Well, um, we used to live in Hillsdale, but my aunt still lives on Northwest Street. She's about five houses from Galloway. And i- in essence, building a hotel and or restaurant in that area constitutes really being now a commercial property, correct? And if there is enough square footage that that kind of a roof will displace that much water, my concern would be that since she lives fairly close to that area, is any kind of water runoff and the control of that water runoff, as well as you're looking at a lot more traffic in that parking area at various times of the night? So now there's more noise pollution in that area where my aunt's living and has lived for, you know, seventy years. So I have a concern about that being more of a commercial, um, property resident, rather than a residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda, was it?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, there, there is a hotel up there already at this point.
Not right there, they heard us in. So that's more down northwest, the Gap, uh, Dollar Center. She's the fourth house.
Thank you, Brenda. Any more public comment? Any more public comment?
George Angel, I live at two ninety-eight Hillsdale Street. I would just like to reiterate what was just said about the water. Hillsdale Street from Galloway North. Is becoming a disaster over the last couple of years because every single time it rains. It's completely flooded. There is a sign that says water over road. That is now a permanent residence. On the side of the street that gets propped up every time it rains. Somebody from the city comes along and props it up. I think that before something like this goes ahead. Somebody needs to think about what's gonna happen to all that water. After you put a big chunk of ground under concrete again. It's at the top of that hill, everything runs down. The college built two big cashments below Galloway just a couple of years ago. They're not enough. They don't hold what's coming down the hill already. And I don't think that putting a whole bunch more concrete up there is gonna help that situation. I think it's just gonna make it worse. And on a more minor note, I think it's worth considering what. Truncating both of those roads is going to do to the provision of emergency services to people in in the area. And how it's going to possibly block or make more difficult access for those services. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Dave, can you speak to the water issue over there?
Jason can, I'll have Jason come up. He can speak to that because he's probably the one who signs up. But I would say any new water runoff would have to be part of that site plan and how it would be dealt with. That would be one of the things reviewed by the city staff and engineers when the project was forward.
Yes, the area he's referring to, when that was overlaid a couple of years ago, the storm sewer does not go that far south. So at some point now or in the future, we need to extend that storm sewer just farther to the south. To intersect those intersection or to these approaches that he's referring to. Now, when we get a site plan to come through, I know years ago, we talked about taking all the water from West Street. Taking it to the west to go right to the river. So I don't know if those will actually intersect or not when the site plan will come before us. So I don't know if that would actually intrude with both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Oh, Jason.
Go ahead, Tony.
Is that sewer that's kind of in front of the, it's right by that sorority house you're talking about, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that just a drywall there? It's not connected?
It's not connected, correct. Yep, that needs to jump. I can't remember exactly where it hooks up, but right before Will's or. Or Division Street there is where it actually hooks up and then heads to the north.
Okay, and and Division is also kind of the the same story, just a drywall?
Yes, sir.
Any more questions for Jason while he's at the podium?
Yeah.
Councilman Sharp.
So Summit Street, that's been concerned about that when they vacated that. The road is in terrible shape. The one down the hill, it used to be where Tom Smalling's repairs, what's the name of that street?
Division, sir.
Division. Anybody drive that divisions crazy in the first place to go down that street? I mean, it is bad. It's one of those third world roads. But I would like to see if we're gonna do this, maybe they should get something in return too, like fix that street for them. Pave it because they're gonna lose some of it, but they still live there. And they should, we shouldn't make them do special assessment because this is something that's beyond, it's gonna benefit everybody. But they should also benefit too. So I would like to see us come up with some way to pave those two streets. And as far as traffic goes, people are still gonna use College Street, Fayette. They're gonna wanna go around Northwest Street, they'll go around, but they have that option. But Summit Street is terrible. I mean, it there's some, like Will Morrissey said last council meeting. There's some streets that they're parked and the rest of it are bad. Well, this is something maybe we can get the college to help us out on and we could ask them nicely. I would like to see that because that's what these people want and I want to make sure they're not forgotten.
Sure.
Thank you.
If I may add one thing to that as well, if I may. When we're looking at Summit Street, all that drainage there is leach basins as well. Put back in in the forties, so none of that system's connected either. So I still go back to kind of what we talked about. West Street really needs to go to the west and localize that as a different project with the road projects you're talking about.
It would be my sincere hope that we could run into a situation similar to the construction that happened on West Street. When the Surly Center was put up. That the college at least fixed that portion of West Street on their own dime. For something similar with Division and Summit. Yes, sir. Any more questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Podium is still open. Public comment is still available. One trip to the podium, good sir.
Is that what you said?
That is what I said. Yes, sir. Thank you, Jack. Podium is still open. Nobody's gonna speak. I'm gonna close the podium, guys.
Galloway Street's gonna be cut in half, it seems like. That's okay with me, but just mentioning that. It sounds like what people want. Fix Division, fix Summit, save the tree. Learn more about the endowment. I think that's brilliant though, by the way, because like I can put twenty bucks in it. People should be educated a little bit more on how endowments work too. If I put twenty bucks in, the twenty bucks doesn't disappear ever. It just earns interest and then they spend the interest. So I think that's a fabulous way for the city to grow its revenue over time. And people can just give if they want to and then suggest to the management team, hey, I want this. Essential service to be beautification or whatnot. Can you manage that for me? So that's great. Also, nice job on fixing the roads over the last few years. I've seen a lot of great work there. That's not related, but. Maybe back into relation to Galloway thing. I think it's a fabulous project. People have legitimate concerns and I do think you should go back to the table with the college and see if they could at least. Help the residents. There will be more noise pollution and light pollution. That's a fact. And then perhaps in the future too, you can use a special assessment district and loop the college into that as well. And get them to pay almost the lion's share of those road projects after the fact too, because I don't know. You're not gonna wanna bother fixing them before construction. You're gonna need to wait till. Twenty, twenty-seven or eight to do that probably. So I think those are my comments, but yeah, the tree, I happened to see the tree the other day. Fabulous tree. It's huge. It's amazing. If you haven't had a chance to see it, go up to Galloway, go check out the massive white oak. It is quite spectacular.
Thank you, James. And yeah, the endowment is brilliant. I know Councilman Soha has been speaking a long time about funding. City services through the endowment portion, so I feel like that's something that's worth bringing up since. Councilman Soha's. Repeated that very off times in the past four years. So, yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Any more public comment? Okay, we'll close the podium. We'll open up the council table. Guys, anything else? Thank you. Not on my watch. All right, guys, anything? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. I I think there are many valid. Arguments have been presented tonight and things to consider. I think the college is trying to be a good neighbor in this and I think. You know, having a beautiful, somebody spoke to beauty when they were, she was speaking on the oak tree. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but. That's one of the things the college is inspired to accomplish is make beautiful things and they're working and endeavoring diligently to. Transform their campus into something that is thus. And I think this. Hundred and fifty-eight proposed hotel project, the hundred and fifty-eight rooms with this artist rendering, if you just go back to. Last council's packet, it's there on page sixty-two. I think the college will hold true to that, so I'm excited about it. I do hope that they can manage to do something and maintain that oak because that is a beautiful tree.
Councilman Wolfram?
Yes, I'd like to also mention that I would very much like to see them preserve the oak. It's a magnificent tree and anything that we could do to maintain that and perhaps people would. Enjoy seeing it if they were staying up at the hotel.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram, Councilman Soha. Anything else, guys? No? I entertain a motion. This motion is to adopt the attached resolution to vacate part of East Galloway Drive and to and the south two hundred and three feet of Summit Street. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Stutchel. Can I have a roll call, city clerk?
Councilperson Sharp? Soha? Stutchel? Veer? Wolfram? Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Palladino? Five yes, two abstained passes. Resolution three, six, one, four.
Thank you, Katie. We will now close the public hearing. We'll move into new business, Sandy Beach admission discussion. This is something that I added. And I was hoping that it would come up at a public services meeting before now, but I don't think you guys have had a public services meeting since the last council. Meeting, something that Shannon's brought up. You know, I mean. You guys okay? Okay. That's all right. That's all right. I've had it placed on the packet. We have always had a five dollar fee to get into Sandy Beach to park your car. Once upon a time, that was a creative way to get around the fact that. In the Sandy Beach deed to the city. Part of that was a stipulation that the public would never be charged to get into Sandy Beach. We've been very responsible with our money. And I feel like one of the most consistent complaints that I hear from the citizens of Hillsdale is that the taxes keep going up. And they don't feel like they're getting a lot in return for it. So I would really like to explore the possibility, and I know we just voted on this and I know you guys hate doubling back on stuff. But keeping the ten dollar fee in place for non-residents of Hillsdale. And allowing residents of Hillsdale to park free at Sandy Beach. I think this would be a small thing in a very healthy department. What I mean is the rec department. I think it would be a small thing that would go a long way with the residents of the city and mean a lot. And would seem to mean a lot to a lot of people. So. The rest of the parks are free to get into and. I know for a fact this is something that we can afford to do. And you know, maybe. Having people park at Sandy Beach for free would increase the traffic in there. Maybe we'd sell more at the concession stand and maybe we would not even see any. Sort of negative financial implication from it. But even if we didn't, the health department's healthy, all the public parks are free to get into and. I really feel like this is one small thing that we could do that wouldn't cost the city a lot of money. That would mean a lot to the residents of Hillsdale. So, yes, sir. Councilman Stutchel.
I think it's a good idea. My question is, do we know what the mix is now? I mean, how many people are city versus non-city that go to the beach?
I I'm not sure about that. Michelle might have those numbers. Jason, do you have those numbers? I mean, I don't think we keep track of it because we don't have any reason to, so Dave?
I would recommend that it's go to public service committee and then we can get that information and look at it. Because there there are some things to consider there. So that's what would be my recommendation.
I'm fine with it going to public services, but I, you know, committees are often where things go to die, so I hope. No, I know not. I know not always, but you know. Yes, sir. Councilman Soha.
You spoke to a charter or something? You suggested that the public wasn't never was never supposed to be charged. Could you help me understand that?
I'm I'm talking to the deed to Sandy Beach. When that land was gifted to the city. Part of the stipulations in the deed was that the public would never be charged to get into Sandy Beach. Hence, the reason that we charge for parking and not entry into it. And it wasn't this council that came up that cooked that up and it wasn't this city attorney that cooked that up. But once upon a time, a city attorney cooked up the fact that we could charge for parking and not violate the deed. We've always charged to get into Sandy Beach and I feel like that was a sneaky thing to do and I'm not, and it wasn't us, like I said, we're not the ones that came up with it. But I think if that was something we reversed on, I think it would be something that would mean a lot, especially to the young families in the city of Hillsdale. And I think it'd be a big win for the city and. And it would just be nice to do something that doesn't cost the residents of Hillsdale more money one time. Councilman Sharp?
I grew up in Hillsdale and I can remember Jim Enman running the beach and we paid then. You had a little sticker on your car. I don't remember what it was, maybe two bucks to get buy the sticker for the year, fifty cents. So they've always charged. I remember back in the day when we had school buses going there, all the schools in the summer would go there. That those days aren't there anymore, but the beach was something, it was the place to go. It was the diamond. Back when Jim Enman run the beach. I'm not saying it's bad now, it's just, it's different.
Yeah, and I'm not even suggesting just getting rid of it altogether. We could charge it, we could still charge non-residents, but we could allow. We could even do the ten dollars for non-residents, but. A year ago or even this summer, five dollars for all residents to get in. We just raised it to ten. Maybe we keep the ten dollars for non-residents, free for. City of Hillsdale residents. Might be a zero-sum game at the end of the day that, like I said, still means a lot to a lot of. People in the city of Hillsdale, so. Councilman Veer?
So I was always under the impression that it was just Owens Park, but was Owens Park, Sandy Beach's part of Owens Park?
They were all given to the city at the same time. That's my understanding.
I think we need to get clarification on that. I thought it was just Owens, but I could be wrong too. So we we can go back and check that and if it goes to committee or comes or stays here, we can get that.
So yeah, I I haven't seen the deed, so I could be speaking falsehood. This is something that I've heard from a former city manager, so before before you, Dave. Councilman Wolfram?
I would agree with making it ten dollars for non-residents and free for residents. And I'm not sure that we would actually lose revenue. It depends again on how many people are. Coming and visiting the beach without, you know, if they're non-residents, so it I I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram. So can we go to committee with this, guys, or?
If it's okay with Rob, we'll do it Monday, the ninth, five thirty. If it's okay with Dave, Jason should probably be there, maybe Michelle as well. Yeah, I'd like to look at the numbers. I mean, when you go there. It seems like twenty percent of plates are maybe more Indiana and Ohio. A lot of people from outside of the city limits. I mean, it's a great facility. What I was gonna suggest, if we had already done the meeting, was that we immediately just revert back to the five dollars while we analyze it. And stick with the ten dollars for non-residents, but yeah, we should look at it more.
Well, that that doesn't even go into effect till next summer. It's not in currently in effect and the the very. Like I said, I have not seen the deed myself and I I haven't seen the stipulations of the gift, but the fact that we don't charge people that walk through. And charge people to drive in makes me think that what I was hearing was probably true. That entry to Sandy Beach was never supposed to be, was supposed to be free per the stipulations of the gift.
Just just so you're aware, because we'll need to take a look at this, there may be some legal. A legal roadblock to making distinction between residents and non-residents for charging for use of the park.
Okay. Okay.
There is some case law in Michigan on that. Uh, if I recall right, it was brought on equal protection grounds. Um, for example, city of Dearborn used to do that to keep African-American residents from Detroit from using their city parks. Um, then they made it where you had to be a resident. And it may for that, for parkland and, and some other things, the, the restriction, your ability to make a distinction between residents and non-residents is, is more restricted than it is in other areas. So, we'll just wanna take a look at that before we actually adapt.
Okay, I mean, and, and that would only be for parks because there's a lot of things that we make a distinction between. Like the compost site, we used to be free for city residents, but not free for people that are, that that are residents, so.
Thinking of state law, I'm pretty sure you can buy a recreation passport as a Michigan citizen for fourteen bucks a year. But if you go there to buy it as a non-resident, it's like thirty-five.
Yeah, I was gonna say, state of Michigan does the same thing, so.
Well, that, that's a distinction between benefits for people who reside in the state and whose tax money goes to fund those and people from outside the state. And it doesn't necessarily have the same analysis for local municipalities. I'm not saying that the conclusion would be that you couldn't do it.
Okay.
I'm saying we wanna take a look at it and make sure that if you can, and if there are any restrictions, that the way you adopt the policy is such that it complies with those.
Absolutely, that's, that's what we have you for, Tom, so Councilman Wolfram?
Um, my guess is that there's a number of people that use the docks for their boats. And they could easily be non-residents. And so I still think that uh you, you may end up not losing money if we're able to do that. Um, there might be just a lot of people that are using the boats and live somewhere else.
Councilman Sharp?
Uh, I've been on this council since two thousand and seven, believe it or not. And um Owens Park was one of the issues we dealt with with car shows. If you remember in the past, the um one group was, who was it? Carrie Doty in that group, the, the Chamber. And they wanted to use the park there, and it said right in the contract that there could be no alcohol sold in Owens Park. So, they had to go across the street where it wasn't Owens Park and sell their alcohol. So, there are stipulations in the contract or the agreement we had with the family. So, definitely that's something Tom would have to look into. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anymore? Councilman Veer?
I would just, uh, David, could you find out or have at that Public Service Meeting, uh, the deed restrictions on said parks? Thank you.
Anything else, guys? Just, I don't think we need a vote, just you guys can hold a committee meeting?
Yeah, um, I think I brought this up last time, but then we didn't do it. Uh, it'd be nice to have actual revenue, projected revenue with the change, and then projected revenue with a rough estimate of uh the resident, non-resident distinction, and then of course we'll have the legal analysis of that.
Awesome. Thank you, Josh. Do we get on this item? Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Okay, we will move on to new business, item letter B, MDOT tree trimming contract. Jason?
Thank you. Over the last month, uh, our office contacted uh MDOT as uh site clearances, sign for signs, uh deadwood, um hazard trees, um and height issues on the highway are becoming an issue as we have not trimmed through um the MDOT thoroughfare for many years. So, in accordance with the City of Hillsdale Truck Like Maintenance Contract, I reached out to MDOT. Um, they did grant us um approval to obtain Solicit three quotes for this project as there's a twenty thousand dollar cap for this project for this year. Um, the areas from Broad Street, um from East Bacon to Steenberg, both sides of the road, West Carlton, and from North Manning to West Fayette, the south side of the roadway, and West Carlton Road, from West Fayette to Arch Ave, the west side of the roadway. Um, we obtained three quotes with complete street care. Um, have the most hours of service available for the twenty thousand dollar cap that we have. Um, with that being said, I would ask for council to approve the work um to complete tree care service in the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Um, this, all this twenty thousand dollar expenditure will be reimbursed by MDOT through our quarterly reports.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Entertained a motion to award the M ninety-nine tree trimming project to complete tree services in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, which will be reimbursed by MDOT. Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Veer. Can I have a roll call, please, city clerk?
Yes. Councilperson Soha? Stutchal? Veer? Wolfram? Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilperson Palladino? And Sharp? Seven, zero, all approved.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we'll move on to new business and into Ms. Lani's reports. We've got a number of appointments tonight. So, the first, uh, all these appointments to Brownfield Redevelopment Board. Apparently, in the um, in the statute, in the statute for Brownfield Redevelopment, members of Brownfield Redevelopment Board have to be members of EDC. Um, so, these are just all the members of EDC appointing to basically refurbish that board, except for Rachel Lot, who will be a reappointment. Then there's Sandy Valance on the Housing Commission, that is actually Dave's appointment. But Dave, you probably won't care if we do these all at the same time, do you? So, I assume you vetted the, uh, Valance, is that Sandy, is that a, a male or a a female? Okay, I'm sure you vetted her and sure she's a good appointment, so any questions? Do I have a motion to make all appointments? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And remember, you may speak on anything your heart so desires. Podium's now open.
Hello, my name is Russ Miller, you all know me. Um, usually I get up here and get all emotional, but today I don't think I'm going to. It's more of anger and hate. Mr. Pelk, uh, Pelley, I appreciate your help because I feel you've done helped me. Mr. Soha, I feel like you threw me under the bus. Have you been down there and looked at it? Second of all, I got a permit for this driveway. You guys keep saying no, no, no. Um, you guys had, it was inspected by the city. Um, they didn't like the way we did it. They made me go through, make my concrete six inches instead of four inches, fifteen foot fat. And so, you know, what about that? Why did you guys approve me to get a permit and approve me to have my driveway? Second of all, we, uh, you guys are, I'm, I was listening to you guys come when my mother-in-law passed away, and we were listening to it on the radio, coming here to see this. That's how I know all this stuff. Uh, across the, Jason says that nobody has a approach over fifty-three foot. He's full of crap. Across the street is twice as long as ours. Second of all, we told him we didn't want the long approach, but he decided he was gonna do that anyway. Third, he, with the way they changed the elevation on it, now the approach is down here where he put it, and our driveway is here, and it's from here to the attorney that far up, so now I have a drive like that to go up. Um, so, and then fourth, I wanna say, I made, tried to call Dave to talk to Dave. Tried to, oh, sit down, maybe we can have a civil conversation, come to a head. He knows that I have hard feelings with Jason, and then Jason calls me. He's like, I, I don't know, I, I just, it, it's, if I, I don't know what to even say, then I just hear that, no, 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 no. There's gotta be something we can do, guys. There's gotta be. And I'm a respectful person. I don't wanna be disrespectful to anybody. I mean, I know he's doing his job, but come on, there's something we can do. Please, that's all I'm asking. I'm sorry to waste your time.
Thank you, Russell. Anymore general public comment?
I know when they do the cul-de-sac, that it's gonna have to meet the requirements for the fire engine to be able to turn around in there without backing up and pulling ahead and backing up and pulling ahead. So, I hope that's one thing they do. I think what should have been done was, rather than vacating those streets, put a stipulation in there, because if the college doesn't do the hotel by chance, then you've given them the streets basically in the end. And I know you guys probably aren't gonna believe this, but they put that beautiful track out there on Barber Drive. Uh, got a special use permit, went through Hillsdale Township. Now they don't have the money to put the bathrooms in. That's why you see all those porta potties out there. So, that tells you they're not overflowing in money. So, who knows if the hotel will even go. I mean, I'm hoping it will, but I'm just saying. That really surprised me when they said they didn't have the money for the bathrooms. I mean, that's a little ridiculous, so. Um, then I've got this thing, and I know I've heard what the attorney said and everything, but I would think the people, the spouses work at the college and their income's based on that. That should be a conflict of interest, in my opinion. I know they say it's not, I understand that, but I just think it should be. And, and even if it's not, I would think the people that are involved in that should be able to stand up and say, well, I'm gonna pass on this because, and state their reasoning. It looks a lot clearer to the people in the general public. Uh, Mr. Sharp saying that he was gonna resign. What I would do, I would, I would do a resignation. I would date it for eleven fifty-nine, at the last day you can serve, and that way nobody can say he went back on his word. Because you would resign on eleven fifty-nine PM of that day. So, just to keep you in good standing.
Thanks, Jack. Anymore public comment?
Hello, um, two things. Last, um, two weeks ago, when you guys had a council meeting, I actually asked somebody about why, where they collect for Sandy Beach was where it was at. It didn't make sense to me where, why it wasn't at the beginning. And then it was explained to me that it was a memorial and that the park was given, and there were some stipulations. And one of the things that we discussed was the amount of money that was left over to maintain that part of the park. Would it be, would you be able to, if you only charged non-residents, to move it to the front where everybody comes in and then lower the rate, because you're gonna be getting two or three times the amount of people, regardless whether they're residents or not, if the entrance had a gate at the front of the park when you go in as opposed to in the middle? It, it just seems, it never made sense to me why you had to drive halfway in the park before you had to pay. And then it was explained to me, and that's something that I don't think a lot of residents understand. I was completely like, oh, okay, well, that makes sense why you guys are, because I just thought, who put that there? It was stupid. But it's because the first part is a memorial park and Sandy Beach is a separate beach or a separate part of the park. I, I didn't realize that until it was explained to me. So, that might be something that when you guys are coming to a decision, if you explain that, because I've only been in town for eleven years, so if you explain that, it might alleviate some of the people being irritated or whatever about why you're doing what you're doing. Because that made a lot more sense to me at that point. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up is the occupancy walkthroughs, because they're my favorite. Um, and I just had an occupancy walkthrough at a property. The walkthrough was on Friday. We received the paperwork on Monday. Um, we informed the owner. He immediately went out that weekend and started working on the few things. One of the things is having to rebuild some stairs on the front. They, the residents have two um entries, so it isn't like they don't have access. But I can't get a contractor in two weeks. And if I don't get it done within two weeks, and I don't know if it's two weeks from the Friday or two weeks from Wednesday when we got the paperwork or informed the, we got the paperwork in the mail, and they're gonna charge me another fifty dollars for a reinspection because I can't get it done in two weeks. I, I, I think we really need to revisit this because it is very time constraining. And I don't know about you guys, if you have any problems finding contractors or getting jobs done in, in immediately, but I do. And I, I still think that's something we need to revisit because it's still a train wreck. Um, and I'm getting very frustrated. Uh, I couldn't get somebody to come in and drill a hole through cement so I could re-put in a dryer vent. And because of that, um, they pulled my occupancy because it took me too long. So, they're gonna charge me twice.
Thank you, CJ.
Um, one of the things to solve your Sandy Beach thing, years ago, we used to get, um, when we paid our taxes on time as a resident, we could come into the city and they would give us a sticker. Can you hold off for one second?
Sorry, Shannon.
Oh, yeah, got that timer going.
Alright, that should do it.
There you go. So, if you pay your taxes on time, we used to be able to come into the city office and then we show proof we paid our tax on time. They gave us a sticker. And then you could use that for your city residents. If they pay their taxes on time, they get into the city. Or if they can just prove, then we just had a sticker on our vehicle to get in and out. That's helpful. Um, but my question is, um, I'd like to know, I've been going through, um, the management, the whole budget. Going over the two, twenty twenty-three budget, I've been looking at your, um, the audit. And I wanna find out, um, what is this four thousand or four million eighty-seven dollars? Four million eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars, um, that is unassigned fund balance. It says the city, says the money is available for the city's um spending at your discretion. If you divided that by five thousand, that's eight hundred and ninety-five homes that you could use to fix roads. Um, also, all the property taxes that have been uncapped lately in the city, there's been a big discussion on Facebook about all the city taxes. And since I work for the county, I know there's been a lot of uncapping, so there's been a lot of extra revenue. So, I'd like to know what is the, the money that you're allowed to spend? I know you have to have some money, like the twenty-one million dollars. I'm sure that's set aside because you always have to have a, a slush fund. But for the four million dollars, it looks like that's available for spending. So, why do you guys keep doing special assessments when you could use that money to put in, fix our roads? Or just use the interest from the twenty-one million dollars probably sitting in account? Or the interest from the four million? If we get a hundred thousand after three years for one point seven million dollars and that goes toward roads, then how can we, can't at least use the interest from these accounts, this extra money? I don't know if it's extra, I'm still, I'm not an accountant, so I'm asking people who are accountants. But I'd like to find out, what are these balances? How much money do we, that you have un, unrestricted? If it's the four million, I would suggest you use that to fix our city roads. Get that out of the way and then start building the other accounts. But eight hundred and ninety-five people, when you divide that by, um, into the four million, can get their roads fixed without the special assessment. So, I suggest you just stop the special assessments, fix the roads, and then you don't have to worry again. And don't laugh about that. I didn't have special, you didn't have special assessments a long time ago, and our roads were better than they are now. And I know it's not all your guys' fault. I know the other people didn't take care of them.
Thank you, Shannon.
Kevin Park at seventy-two West Bacon. Real quick, I'll keep it under three minutes so you don't have to monkey.
Thank you, Kevin.
Um, I didn't plan on addressing this, but I understand, you know, the issue of where they collected the beach. And as somebody that, I did go out there extensively the last two seasons with my grandsons, and they enjoy going out there. I think having, these are usually high school kids working there. And I think by having them down there, there's also the safety issue. That they are within view of other adults. Um, they're within view of the other employee or employees that are down there, because sometimes their people are not friendly to them that are coming through. And uh, I know there's no smoking there, there's no dogs supposedly, but you see them all the time. And when I mentioned it to one of the employees, he said, I'm not calling in, we've been threatened, we've been, you know. So, I think by having them within view of each other at least, it's a good safety issue. Because these are young people, and there are some people, they get, are gonna get very upset if it's a dollar or five dollars. Um, you know, that they have to pay anything. So, I think that, you know, possibly a spring training for the employees to let them know not to be afraid to call. to let them know not to be afraid to call, you know, PD for a backup if they have a belligerent person or something, might be a good idea, but thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Any more public comment, general public comment?
Hi, I'm Jessica Miller, Nine Lakes Street. I, I'm one of the ones affected by the driveway. The change has drastically changed for us a lot. We used to be able to drive campers through it, work on them in the drive, pull them out when we're done, bring our enclosed trailers through, pack stuff in it, unload it, much more convenient. Now we can't do that. You talk about, well, we, we made an agreement, we opened up the center of your drive. No, absolutely not. As the homeowner, I was against it, I told everybody, no, I did not want that. Still to this day, I do not want anybody pulling in the center of that driveway. There is a water line that I'm not gonna pay when it gets messed up. I will not pay for it. Somebody will hit it, they will drive over it, it'll get messed up, but it ain't gonna be me. I don't think it's right. I don't understand how anybody can get a permit for something, and it's, yep, we want it done this way instead of that way, we want this instead of that. You do everything the way that they want it done to get the permit. You do it their way, and then one day you guys just rip it up? Where does that go? Is that still effective? Is that still good to today? It was paid for, we did have it. I guarantee you, if it had not been approved so many years ago, it wouldn't have had a six-inch concrete driveway port. But we had permission from, from the city. I don't understand where this goes. I don't, I still don't understand it. It's not making any sense to me. There's other houses where, yep, that's okay, yep, they're a college professor, they're okay. Let's go a couple blocks up, oh, that's the college, that's okay. I don't know how two-foot a curb at the college is acceptable, but we gotta have twenty-five on an empty street? Where there's nothing but residential traffic for the most part, people that live on it? Maybe a handful of others? But you curb off a drive, and then I gotta worry about my family and my friends driving over the curb? Because it's always been a driveway. It's never been anything but.
Thank you, Jessica. Any more public comment? General public comment? We'll close the podium, move into the city manager's part. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things I wanted to mention. The first is, this Sunday is the fly-in from seven to two. There's a breakfast starting at seven A.M. with the Exchange Club. Um, and, uh, there should be quite a bit there for the family to view and look at, and there will be rides, uh, available as well. Um, we've just started our youth football, um, program, I think they started practice on Sunday. Um, this year we have six teams, which is up two teams from last year. Um, last year was a very slow year, coming back from COVID. About seventy kids, which was about twenty-five percent increase. Um, we do have a bid out, uh, for, um, farming the airport, uh, farmland. Um, so that is out there, um, and open until October fourth, uh, for receiving, uh, bids on that. That can be found on the city website, and, uh, we've posted it and I think advertised it as well, yes. As far as the Saint, Saint Joe Street project, that is pretty well finished up. They're just tidying up, tidying up the last-minute, um, line work and restoration. But otherwise, if you haven't seen that project, they did a nice job over there. Um, the, uh, Mitchell Research Center contract, um, the Mitchell Research Group have, have not, um, signed their contract yet, just, this is for council's knowledge. Um, the, the contract itself is what was created, the last lease. Um, they wanted to make changes to it, um, and the city attorney, um, John Lovinger is out of town, who worked on that. Um, so if, um, the changes stay, um, that contract will probably have to come back to council, um, because there were some things that, um, would change what council had originally approved. Um, lastly, just, uh, so everyone is aware, we will be this week, um, starting some seal coating work on different parking lots of the city, um, some beach locations, so the DNR boat launch, um, Owens Park, the parking there. I think that work's supposed to start on Thursday. Friday, we have, um, the parking lot by the Elks, the Lower Library parking lot, Field of Dreams, where they're doing seal coating. And then Saturday, Kikus Park and, uh, parking near the Methodist Church. Also, um, next week, um, they'll be coming through town doing the long, um, paid, long line pavement marking. So we'll have quite a bit going on, um, in addition to the Westwood project, which is coming along well, uh, given the intricacy of the work that's, um, being done up there. So with that, Mayor, I'll take any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave? Councilman Sharp?
The signs, somebody was saying Hillsdale College doesn't pay for advertising. Um, those signs they put out there, they paid for those, those blue and white signs. We didn't pay for those, Hillsdale College paid for those, right?
Um, I believe they made, they, they made a contribution to the signs, so there was some, some portion of it.
Correct, so I just want to get that out there, that they did step up on that. I'm not a big Hillsdale College supporter, but I want to make sure people understand, let's get it clear, because social media runs crazy and misinforms people on some certain facts, and so we have to fact-check them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Any other questions for Dave? Okay, thank you, Dave. Council comment? Anybody have anything? Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor, two quick things. Uh, Mr. Miller, uh, you're not a waste of time, I appreciate you voicing your frustration. It's unfortunate that it had to come to that, but, uh, I just wanted you to know, I don't think you're voicing that as a waste of time. And then I just wanted the public to know, I picked up these as I walked the short distance from my house to here. I probably could have picked up a lot more, but these were obvious. And, um, this was on the streets of Miller Ultra, empty can in front of the post office here. And I just want to remind the citizens of our fine city that, uh, you know, drinking and driving pretty much frowned upon. Uh, I hope you get caught next time. And I would also encourage our residents, you know, let's have some respect for each other and ourselves and our city. And, uh, let's keep it clean, and, um, so that this doesn't have to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rob. Any other council comment? Motion to adjourn? Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Soha. Do adjourn, all in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned.